This meeting is called Order. This is the regular work session, Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building G in Bisbee. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer, or mobile app, or via phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714, conference ID 44509059. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, please call 520-432-9200 for direction. This time, I would like to call the board. Alright, so District One, Crosby is here. District Two.
Gomez is here.
And District Three, Antonori is here. All members present, we will now go into the work session introductions. Anybody special that we need to introduce? Nobody? Okay, and then next is the items for discussion. Alright, the first item on the agenda is review agenda items for the upcoming regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 28th at 9:30 in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, or the work session followed by a regular board meeting at 10:00 a.m. So, I guess from there, we could have the, we can just go straight to discussion. Anybody wants to start bringing up an issue? So, Tom, I'll give Mr. Crosby first stab if you want to bring something up.
Sure, let's take a look at the draft here.
If I may, Kevin?
Sure.
So, there's a few meetings happening on Tuesday that I want to raise your awareness of. There's the agenda for the Board of Equalization meeting, and that is a matter to ratify or amend decisions of the State Board of Equalization Hearing Officer on a matter. And so, the board does sit as the Board of Equalization. We have a Hearing Officer who oversees the matters, and then the board ratifies or amends those decisions. So, the assessor will be here to go over that matter, make his statements at that meeting for the board's next decisions regarding.
And that's after the regular 10?
That'll be the first meeting at 10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock?
Mm-hmm. We'll do that right off first before we get into the regular meeting.
When you think about the word "equalization," that's related to property tax.
Correct.
Right?
Assess values.
Assess values. So, is he going to brief us on?
Yes.
The updated, okay.
He'll provide a briefing at that time. We can't go too far into the matter because it is a hearing, and the parties have to both be present. Just wanted to make you aware of what that is, since you haven't done a Board of Equalization.
And they said it in a session like this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, then upon completion of that, then we will begin the regular.
Correct.
Meeting as well. So.
And then, yeah, so we can talk about the agenda for the regular meeting, all the standard language. You'll have the call to public, and the consent items again.
So, we're going to have another, under Finance, item number three, we're going to have another list of demands, just like we just did?
Yes, so we'll have another updated list that we get tomorrow, Friday morning-ish, usually before noon. We get that list and post it with the agenda.
So, this is part of the discussion, right? I can just ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, in finding out, trying to make sure I understand what we're approving, you get that on Friday, and then I'm able to look at it over the weekend?
Yes. So, once we post the agenda on Friday, that's the last thing we're waiting for before we post everything. So, we usually try to post beginning or 2:00, and then it's all there.
Is there any way, I guess maybe we're going to discuss this to get it a little bit more ahead of time, or is it just the way?
It is the way the accounts payable process works. We get the information from departments, and they're submitting their invoices. And so, there is a finance schedule for how they input all that information, so that they have the most up-to-date list for you at the time.
Is that quite weekly?
Yes.
Quite weekly?
Are you talking about other agenda items besides warrants and demands?
No, I guess I'm just trying to figure out if we're going to, if I'm voting on an invoice to pay for something. What would be an example, right?
Talking about this sheet, right? She wants to be able to look at that sheet before?
And have some time.
Friday is the earliest.
Friday is early. So, I'm looking at it on Friday at the end of the day, if something?
Yeah, you can look at it, yeah, usually.
And then to vote on it by Tuesday?
Yes, so you would have the whole weekend.
And so, usually, how many are there that you have to approve? It could be anything from one to 100.
Yeah, there's a lot.
There's a lot.
So, do we spot check these? Do we have a spot checker that?
Through the finance office.
Like a, who does that?
So, the Director and the Deputy Director review it for accounts payable.
So, let me just bring this example. And I don't, I know I'm, because it's something that's kind of close to home, Pernal Lights, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, say that, that, you know, it was 12,521, 12,522, then it went to 24,023 and 24. And yet, that's the one thing that people are saying there's no lights. So, how do, how do I know if that is in with all this, and people are saying to me, hey, what are you going to do about the lights?
Yeah.
How do I find a way in which to follow the money, I guess, right?
So, Pernalville, you're bringing up a special, a light district?
Right.
That's not going to be on that list.
So, when does that come up? Is all the special districts come up separately?
They, getting, yeah, budget time, when we approve the budgets for the special district.
Exactly, year around, that's the one time payment.
Those utility bills come into the Clerk of the Board's office, and we review them and sign the checks for Pernalville.
So, this is maybe just for printing, or for, like, say?
These are department demands, expenses that departments incur.
Whether it be contracts.
Contracts. Professional services, office supplies, you know, software.
Software.
A variety of things that keep the county moving.
This is one thing we want to look at, is the number of the fund, to me.
Okay.
And you can go through it, and once you, once you figure out what is the number of the fund, then, then you can kind of pinpoint that and hunt through it.
I can give you a fun, yeah, I think in your binder, your orientation binder, that was a fun, but we can put that up to you.
Back to the occurrence that happened last week with the, with the table. So, do we, do we, do we have a spot checker?
We do, and they, the Department Director has apologized for that error. They, they were, they did not spot check that week.
Yeah, gotcha. So, but I mean, this is a little stuff, you know? This is our growing pains here, as we get our feet under us here, on the new gig that Ms. Gomez and I got here. He's, he's a veteran at this. But, you know, I've just seen just a couple little things that we, we got to have a second set of eyes on, on stuff. Like, now, you know, I know you've got somebody sitting watching these meetings to make sure that the computers are working, right? So, now, something like that that happened last week, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a formal process that we have that, you know, people adopt and follow to make sure that doesn't happen again?
Understood, yeah.
That's all I'm good, I'm good now. But I, I would like, later, not asking for more information, this is an eye chart already, trying to stand here. But I'm just looking for a little more detail on these. I think Ms. Gomez is too, I know Mr. Crosby probably would probably wouldn't mind either. But, some of these, and maybe an explanation. So, set up a meeting maybe independently with myself alone, or Ms. Gomez alone, where we can meet with.
With the Finance Director.
A person that rolls up this report, and kind of go through some of this, so we get a better understanding, just so we're up to speed. I don't know if you want to.
We can do that.
Do that too, Mr. Crosby. I made a presumption that you're a professional with this already. So, do you want to get more detail on this, or?
What I have mentioned in the past, that I think the, the category of professional services is too broad.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how many categories it should be besides that one category, but more than one.
I mean, in light of, I'm not, you know, we were up in Phoenix last week, we kind of had a sidebar discussion, but for the sake of sharing it with my other two colleagues, you know, there's just the, you know, the poor Santa Cruz County guys beaten up while they're up there, right? So, there's just this perception now, and then there's been issues. I found out recently in Sierra Vista, where they had like $200,000 of stuff that nobody noticed, and.
The fraud, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's all these little things, and I don't want us to get bit in the rear end by that. So, we do need to tighten up somehow, you know, with regard to getting more detail, and maybe getting a better explanation of this stuff. And then, again, having a check and balance process, so that stuff like that doesn't happen. So, one of the things, and we could set this for a future agenda item, I would like to hire a professional accountant, and I talked to the guy, forgot his name already.
Oh, okay.
The accountant up at the County Supervisors Association, the little short guy, you know, and he gave me a couple names of some, some accountants that would be willing to help, and they do government accounting. They're experts at government, instead of generally accepted accounting practices, they do government, which is grossly different, unfortunately.
Yeah.
He said he'd be willing to give us some names. Maybe we should have another meeting to discuss hiring a, one of those guys to do a budget review, and maybe provide us some concepts for best practices for checking and balance, checks and balancing, you know, to make sure we've got a process in place for, for checking on some of this stuff.
And I agree, because the one thing everyone asks me is, you know, do you know what you're voting on?
Right.
And right now, you know, I really don't, and I guess I'm not expected to, but I want to know. So, I think that how is one like that, that could advise us and say, well, this is, this is how you go about it, and I'd like to start at the bottom and work out. And it's going to probably take a little time. I wish it could happen quickly, but I agree with you. I think it's just, it's not trying to micromanage, it's just trying to do our job the best we can and be accountable.
We need to, we need to have a, a sort of a spot check audit type system, too, where we just randomly, you know, do an audit of the Health Department, or randomly do an audit of the Elections Department, or randomly do an IT Department, you know, just random stuff, where we have somebody just come in and just do a.
Okay.
You know?
So, right.
Mr. Casey, are you able off the top of your head to talk about what audit we did? And it was mainly had to do with payroll.
We might be wondering too much, as I'm concerned.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Start talking about audits, moving beyond the operating.
Well, I mean, this was related to the discussion earlier, but I mean, we could, we could, that's why I said.
I was just going to say, we did, we did everything that was under the Board of Supervisors. And, and so, that's like building G over to.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm talking.
And we came up with a new payroll system, because of that. So, that, that's one thing that.
Well, just a work session, again, for, for having that discussion down the road, just something to, something to think about.
Okay.
Alright, so, any discussion on that, for the demands and transfers, number three? Anybody got anything with regard to juvenile probation agenda draft four?
Well, if you back up a little bit, Development Services, number two, I would like to know if that is a franchise agreement. Anybody know?
No, that's not a franchise agreement.
Okay, that's not a utility.
It's, it's applying for the bead money to extend broadband throughout the county.
Okay, thank you.
So, we get two letters in the past. This is another company that would like a support letter.
And they're competing, so it's like competing for, so we got three people competing for this.
In different areas of the county, some of them, so. Different providers from different parts of the county.
Do we have a, a person that interacts, a liaison that talks to these guys?
Yes, myself and Dan Coxworth.
Oh, you and Dan? So, yeah, I'm talking to a couple constituents. I'm fortunate enough now, I used to have Elon Musk, Starlink, and then Valley Telecom ran fiber by my house, finally, and I got, now I'm on fiber. But they stopped on Dragoon Road. They went down Dragoon Road, they got to my Golden Rule, and that was where the, the cable end. So, everybody past me doesn't have fiber. So, I'm just curious. I mean, it's not, I know it's a private company, it's got nothing to do with us, but I mean, I know they're trying to expand that. Is that part of it?
That, that's part of this, is trying to get fiber everywhere we can throughout the county. It's not going to happen, you know, because the cost of it won't happen everywhere.
But there's a huge federal grant that came down.
That's exactly what this is for.
Right, right, to, to, to fund getting rural.
That's a bead, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, but I'm just saying, who's, do we have anything to do with following that?
Yeah.
Or is that a direct-to-them grant?
It'll go direct to them. We're not, we're not trying to get into the ISP, the Internet Service Provider business.
Right, right.
You know, we're letting the, the market do that and, and helping them along the way.
But does Dan like the guy that makes sure they're doing it to code, and they're putting the thing?
No, it's, it's going to be a, well, yes, to code. So, yeah, they're just going to follow our, our rules, you know, development service rules and everything.
Right, right.
However, the state is the one that tracks these grants, and they're the ones that's going to reward their grants and track everything with it.
Okay.
And this is just us saying, yes, we support them coming to our county and giving more broadband.
So, do, so, so Valley Telecom do fiber, that other guy, were they doing Wi-Fi or a microwave?
All the ones that we were supporting is primarily fiber with, with fixed wireless as a backup, and then extreme, you know, Elon Musk may be the, you know, extreme case where we can get either of those options to it.
When I was on, I used to be on broadband off of, what's that mountain right there? Texas Canyon, a big antenna out there. It used to beam at the antenna on my house. I had to point it right at that, at the mountain there to get it, before, when I, 10 years ago, and I moved out here, that was what, what I had. And then I switched to Musk. But is that also under this grant? The white power?
The white power, so, they, they were, they did receive a, a letter as well as a, as a partner with one of the other providers.
Okay.
Not directly to them, but one of the other providers had requested a letter last.
I, I mean, there's different ways to deliver Internet service. That's why I was trying to figure out which ones we're talking about.
All, all of the above. So, but fiber is the primary.
Fiber is the primary. Okay. Alright, I could let them know it might be coming.
Yeah, and I, I have, I have a bunch of maps and everything else I could share with you and show you, you know.
Yeah, just be curious, because again, I get, I run into people, and people ask, you know, hey, my neighbor's got it, I don't have it. How come I don't have it? It's just, and I know it's not us, and I say, well, it's not the county, it's, you know, it's private sector, but just curious. Be nice to have any other questions on item number two, Mr. Crosby?
Yes, sir.
Alright, back to item number four, juvenile probation. Any discussion on that? Any inquiry or question on that?
So, this is a grant that we're matching, or this is, this is funding provided by the Administrative Office of Courts, and Teresa Rockbridge from Court Finances here, if you have specific questions.
Yes, is money coming to us or going from us?
Coming to us.
So, we're getting a grant of 8141 bucks?
Mm-hmm. And so, the board needs to accept, approve the acceptance of that grant.
Who's it coming from?
Yep, so Teresa, you'll come to the microphone, please. So, this is Teresa Rockbridge, she's with Court Finance. If you want to.
Where, where's the grant coming from?
This is coming from the AOC, the Administrative Office of the Courts. That's where most of our funding comes from. This was one that we specifically applied for, for a special project that we're doing.
What is that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's the Restitution Assistance Initiative. And so, what that is, is allowing any of the youth that are on probation to work or do community service, to earn minimum wage to pay off the restitution.
What is minimum wage?
I don't know what it's like.
It's 13.
13 something hours, now, 14? Was it up to 14?
Yeah, just minimum wage.
Yeah, get them like California. But that's another topic for no dig.
So, this pays for them to do the community service, right?
Yes. And what they'll do is help earn that money. The money does not go to them. We'll get a check to the victim.
All to the victim. God, okay, goes to the victim. Hey, okay.
It's going to pay, pay their debt to society. Alright, any other discussion on that? Thank you. I think we're good there.
And so, that's, I'm sorry, just one question.
Sure.
So, that is till the end of June 30th, 2025? And then you come back July, I guess, first?
So, we'll reapply for the grants again.
Okay.
This grant can go on for about three years. It's, it's, you know, you get an initial amount to kind of set up, and then you get a lesser amount.
As it goes on.
For the next three years.
Okay.
And they can either continue it, or it'll go away, but I believe that this is something that we'll find funding for.
So, what year are we in right now?
We're in fiscal year '25.
No, but I mean, as far as the three-year grant, it's a.
Well, we're just, the first, this particular grant is our first. We know this is a grant we've had before.
So, this is the first year of the cycle?
First year.
Okay, thank you.
We move.
That's it.
Alright, so, on the Development Services for five, six, and seven, is there a way we can get the, the district added, which district that is on there? Just like, so we know? I mean, I guess I could go look at the parcels left there.
No, but it'd be easier, and, and I, because I went to a lot of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, is there any way to know how the plan, so, I figure if they all come to us for a vote, that means it passed the Planning and Zoning Commission, right?
Correct.
Is there any way to find out what the vote was? I mean, not that we could do anything, but I'd just be interested in knowing, was it us, you know?
So, a couple ways. You could review the Planning and Zoning minutes and meetings that are on our website, or within this, each item, staff will place a, a presentation, and it's attached to the agenda item, that explains the Planning and Zoning Committee's review and their vote.
Okay. I, I just think it would be, you know, to know, because when I go out there, oh, you know, you guys did this and this, and again, and we don't, whatever, it would be just kind of, be nice to have a background. And I promise, I know that the last meeting, there was a lot of, I mean, I think it was in your district, Frank, there was a big hoopla about an RV or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
But it would just be nice to know if all the commissioners voted against it, or if it was 4 to 3.
Right, and that's.
Just so that when we go out there.
And that's part of this process.
Okay, so that will be, yes, okay.
There's almost always a map that is presented by the Development Department.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying for the, when we do the working sessions, just throw the district on there, just as a cursory, and then we could, that way there, it just keys me in, and I can go pull that up and look at it.
Exactly.
I've done that with, with the last one we did in Ms. Gomez's district, the guy that changed his zoning, I saw that, but.
Yeah, okay.
I know where to find it, I just, just so I could see, maybe I should pay a little extra attention to one of them.
That's okay.
That's all.
It is a draft, so that's fine.
Yeah, I have a question with regard to five, six, and seven, which is, at this time, is there any public opposition to any of the items?
I don't know if we can share that information at this, because we'll. Matthew, Matthew Taylor is here from Planning and Zoning.
I think there was one.
Oh, and there's eight on the back, too.
There was, I wanted to hear what real controversy.
Is that the same one?
That's different category.
Oh, sorry.
Good morning, Supervisors. Matthew Taylor with Development Services. I'll be presenting these dockets next Tuesday. Since these are public hearing items, our conversation that we have during work sessions is quite limited. We don't have a county attorney representative here, but typically this is.
He's on, is he?
Okay, maybe he could speak to that. But I, I'm going to assume that it's okay to say that we do have opposition to one of the dockets.
That's fine. That's all I needed to know.
And, and, well, so, it's, do I call my planning and zoning acquainties to find out which were the ones that were controversial, what's?
So, when this presentation will also, like, once you see it, we need to get to your training and agenda, because you can go in and review them now. But if the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation explains what that opposition was, and, and it provides that background.
So, when we get this coming up, and say, just for example, there's one that's real controversial, right? We either vote yes or no, but we've, so, somebody is doing something in District Two, and there's a lot of opposition to it, but it just passed by, say, 43, or whatever the number was. When it comes to meet for a vote, I'm either voting yes or no, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, if I vote no, it's because I've heard my constituents, but then I'm overstepping what the Planning and Zoning Commission did, right?
So, I would just ask one question, or actually make a statement. So, we do have the attachments with the agenda. So, we have the staff memo, as well as the staff presentation, which summarizes the commission's action. We also have the video of the meeting posted on our YouTube page, so that's viewable. And of course, if any of the supervisors have any questions whatsoever about a docket item, they can contact the case planner, typically me, with any questions that you have part of the meeting. So, any questions about the application, if there's been anything that's, that we can share, we will do so. And it's very helpful to have that information going in sometimes, but keep in mind that it is a public hearing, and most of the discussion and deliberation is supposed to occur during the public hearing itself.
Got you. So, then, and I get this, we do this a week before, so that's plenty of time for me to review. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks for, my questions may sound redundant, but it's all part of the learning process.
Alright, any other Planning and Zoning, nothing?
Number eight.
Number eight, IGA approval.
Yes.
So, again, with these, this is the concern I raised regarding IGA's, I want to know the dollar impacts on all these IGA's.
We can add that to the agenda language?
Yeah, because I, I mean, there's like a million of these things.
Well, I, I'm really cognizant, I'm really aware of this one, because when, when my dad was mayor, the concern was that Douglas was not getting anything for the money they put in. They put in 15,000. I think Sierra Vista puts in 30. I know Tombstone removed themselves from it. In talking with the mayor yesterday, he's like, you know, I don't know if I should use this money to hire our own tourism director, which is one thing I think we would possibly, I think we did that, I'm trying to remember, this is in 2010 and 11, where we really wanted Douglas to be more marketable, right? So, I know that until he sees data of numbers where the Tourism Board is actually showing that they've marketed Douglas, and market is getting, and Douglas is actually receiving some kind of benefit from it, they might consider withdrawing, too. And this is concerning to me, because I think one of my things that I want to do is promote all of the county, right, and, and work with the Tourism Board. But I think the, the problem in the past has been, there's been a feeling, maybe not by Sierra Vista, because they're big, they have their own marketing, but that Tombstone in Bisbee has got a lot of that effort. Now, Tombstone's out, maybe it's Bisbee. So, there's all these, these kind of conflicting feelings. And so, I don't want Douglas to, to leave the Tourism Board, but I also want the Tourism Board to be able to say, this is what we're doing for you. So, now, we, we've actually directed this many people to Douglas. So, I don't know, and maybe we could do a work session on that, what are data there is that we could provide to the mayor to show him that it's worth its $15,000 to contribute. So, all the cities contribute, and then does the county contribute, too?
Yes. So, on page three is the funding schedule for 2024. Oh, you don't have it, but this is on the IGA, that page three lists out the funding schedule for the rest of this fiscal year, and most likely, based on our budget development, it would stay the same into next fiscal year. The county doing 34,000, each city does 15, except Sierra Vista's doing 35. The Tourism Council does have quarterly meetings, and it's like, all the city managers and the county administrator meet at these quarterly meetings, and they receive a report from the coordinator who is employed by the City of Sierra Vista through this funding. And that's not her primary job, she has other jobs, it's part of her duties. And they, those reports provide marketing impact analytics from, whether it be Google searches, or other placer data, which is like data when your cell phone, if you're in an area and you went to an event.
Right.
It helps, it tracks you. So, there's all this marketing data that is presented there, and so, City of Douglas, being a partner, they can request for staff to provide additional data, or we can have that discussion within the Tourism Council. The important thing is to be at the table to make those changes.
And I like to go to those, that means allowed for the supervisor to go?
You can go.
Okay. And then I posted, the mayor would like to have that information, because I asked him, have you gotten any reports? He says, I haven't got, but that, it's not our fault, that might be the fault of the way the administration works in Douglas. So.
It's just, it's, it's information that probably hasn't been given, but can be given.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, you let me know when the next meeting is, and then, I'd like to invite the mayor. So, I, I don't want him to leave, because I mean, I.
Right, I think they do get, it's, it's, it does, we have the Explore Coachees website, explorecoaches.com, and then they do a lot of marketing within two international markets.
Right.
Germany, but then also other states like Chicago and Dallas, I think are, are two big markets that come.
Right, right. So, he's, can come to these meetings, too, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, does any non-government agencies chip into this, too?
No.
Like the Chamber of Commerce, Sky Island Alliance guys?
No, they have not.
Do they benefit from any of this money?
They are, I would say, partners from a communication standpoint to help promote our events, and we promote their events, because it's all.
Are they getting any of this money?
No.
Okay.[1778.41]
But they might benefit from it. I mean, that, that's kind of the thing where we have to get a better network, where we're working together. Because, uh, you know, we've all, and I used to be on the Chamber of Commerce in Douglas. We try to start a role for Chamber of Commerce. There's always conflicting issues among different cities, but I think if we can do something that is a general, like, look, we all benefit the chambers, Sky Island, the cities, if we can all get on the same page and use this money to promote everyone.
And putting in different, we, we strive to improve the calendar that's on Explore Cheese to show the events and we can pull everybody's events into that calendar. But, um, this also allows us to access Arizona Office of Tourism
Mm-hmm.
Money and grants because we're a partnership of the whole county.
So if that was to go away, the I G A for this, then we wouldn't have access to the Arizona.
Correct, yeah. And the visitor center, um, each city has a visitor center, so they get, uh, you know, the, the brochures and things to put in their visitor center. It, it helps.
Okay.
If, uh, additional question for this, yeah, Kathleen, this is, appears to be exactly what Sharon has.
Right.
Right there, this is, came from the Agenda Quick Program.
Right.
The attachments for this item.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if you tell that yet. So it, it says thirty-four thousand. So, uh, obviously you've got, what, you've got five cities and then not a city, Cochise County chipping in thirty-four thousand. And so that makes, uh, the, the, the problem that I saw with this is when I tried to get as constituents some representation,
Hmm.
There was five cities on this board and not, it, it, there was, this guy, he, he was from, he was from Tombstone. He wanted his business in Tombstone to be represented and it never did. And, and it said, well, I'm not part of, you, you need these five cities, but I'm part of Cochise County. I said, yeah, that's true. But he was, but he sits, he was in Tombstone. It was like, he thought he was getting blackballed.
Right, and, and I think the council is trying to address how we um, include Tombstone because it's a major tourist attraction.
Final love when people think of Arizona and
There's a history, yeah.
It's like
What is, so we are working to improve that outreach.
Okay, so let me ask you something. Who represents, who's on the board from the county? Me, you, okay, um. I, I think we need to think as, we are, although all the cities, we need to have a better messaging and, and more of like, hey, let's all get on the page together, even if we go to Tombstone and say, hey, look, now to the mayor and council. I know there was some problem on the way they felt they were marketed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, when I was on the board, I kind of went to the meetings back in two thousand ten. There was a lot of contention because there was, you know, it's amazing, power struggles, politics and everything. But I think if they hear a voice, maybe it's from us, maybe it's from you, that says, look, let's rethink of how we're doing this, so everyone feels that they're getting a benefit from this and bring Tombstone on board. Because if we make the county a destination, not just for two days in Bisbee or a day in Tombstone or in Bisbee, but for the whole county, make it a week, it's, you know, like I've told, said to many people, you heard me yesterday, my ex was from Croatia. I had probably seventy people from Yugoslavia who knew everything about this county. This was their dream. It was their bucket list. And they wanted to see the whole county. And I think we need to take that approach to promote tourism, because we're all going to benefit from that. The county, everybody does, right? And so maybe, I know we're putting a lot on you, but I, I'll help you, you know, I really, I really want.
All the cities have been trying to improve, um, our outreach with Tombstone because it's, it's, I won't go into the whole background as to the reasons why, um, but it's a relationship building that we have and, and fixing that we have to do.
And since the supervisor, the county board is, is an integral part of having this happen, maybe they need to hear like, come on, you guys, let's start getting together at the table and let's talk together, see how we can get Tombstone board, see how we can do. I'm willing to be that voice and I hope one of you guys can do, because the more the better. But I think it's a real issue and especially when we're looking at this rad redemption. I don't know if you've heard about this. It's one of the biggest videos in the world. Anyone under probably thirty-five knows about it. They came to Tombstone, nine thousand people came. They had a, they were just in Tombstone, but people, it was the first time that the city of Tombstone, every business was in the block that day.
Hmm.
He's coming back. He had a fight with the council. They went to South Dakota. Now they're coming back. I'd like to see him expanded to other areas other than Tombstone, especially if Tombstone doesn't want him to have it all. Well, come to Douglas, come to Wilcox, come to McNeil. There's a lot of places. This is a huge deal. And it's a lot of money, right? And so I really like things like that to become into the county.
Okay, okay, well, yes.
Yeah, I can throw a whip like that.
Okay, go ahead.
It's not a fundamental function of government. We could save thirty-four thousand dollars of tax money and those, uh, that tax money could be used by the would-be payers to spend it however they want, including tourism of wherever they want to go.
I was asking if there's any N G A involvement in the tourism stuff, right?
Well, this is how I throw another blanket on you, is that this money is not that much money to promote businesses because we don't, I mean, with, we're not making, our county is not rich. If we can bring more tourism and have for thirty-four thousand dollars, a message that brings people here to spend their money, to stay in the hotels, to buy food at the restaurants, to buy knickknacks. I think those businesses would find that that money is more spent than them getting, I don't know, whatever they would get in their pockets from thirty-four thousand dollars.
And the way, the way you do that, the right way to do that is to do an R O I, to see if you get a return on that investment, right? So you would have to somehow develop a, uh, some metric to determine that, okay, we sunk thirty-four grand of tax dollars in this investment in tourism. If we get a bump from that and is that delta more than thirty-four thousand dollars in tax revenue for the county? And then, then you can make that case that, yeah, it helped generate the revenue to cover itself plus extra.
And then maybe that's something we have to
Right, we can work that, work that in.
Then it's justified. If you're throwing thirty-four grand at something and you don't see any
Well, exactly, and I think that
Change, then I guess to Mr. Crosby's point, it's a waste of thirty-four thousand.
Well, and Douglas may say, hey, I'm not getting anything out of it, so I'm going to take that fifteen thousand and, and hire our own tourism director. But still fifteen thousand doesn't get you very much when you got fourteen dollars a minimum hour, right?
Yeah.
So if we could work something into that, and I think he would like to see what kind of return of investment it is for him to contribute to this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to our, the city of Sierra Vista staff that works on those reports. Uh, Tony Boone, the economic development director at Sierra, city of Sierra Vista also works with the staff members, so I think we could come up with something that would address those concerns.
Okay, that'd be great. That we could prove it works.
That's always a good thing, yeah.
Any questions on number eight? Any additional ones?
No, sir.
All right, number nine on another I G A, again, hundred twenty-two K, is that coming or going?
That's the, perhaps we could hear from our
Yes.
Education Director from the county.
So, uh, county school superintendent Jackie Clay is here, because this is a grant for her program.
That'll be county superintendent of schools, thank you. Thank you. Um, basically what this is, is a I G A between, um, the county and the Department of Education to, um, have someone come and specifically focus on, um, student suicides and also any type of, um, programs or anything that we can use to prevent or prevention. So what's going to happen is because our staff is so small, we're going to bring one person in and their job is going to be to provide support through our office. Okay, and capacity, so especially so our small schools would get all of the support they need because we do have a big problem with suicides.
How many suicides have you had? So, so when you, you talk about the problem, what is the statistics?
Would you like the statistics of Cochise County or the state?
I like Cochise County.
Well, so far, um, in the last two years, we've had maybe, I'd say five or six. And anytime that happens, we have, we have a emergency response crisis team. And we bring that team to the school because it not only, um, affects the school, it affects the students, the teachers, the community, the parents. We are a big educational ecosystem. So instead of the school having to deal with those things, because as you know, teachers, they're trained to teach and we have so many social issues that's going on in this world today. And our office is to fill in the gaps so that our schools can focus on what they were trained to do, which is to teach and ensure that our future leaders are going to be okay in the future.
So is this for one person?
It's for one person, um, renewable yearly. So I do believe that depending on how well we do, and I will say our office is doing so well that we receive grants where no one else in the state has received, and we've received a federal grant where we were the only ones in the state of Arizona to receive that, having to do with basically the same thing. And then we also received another grant that had to do with, um, bullying and mental health, et cetera, et cetera, because that's the thing right now. The foundation of our youth, they can't learn and there's so many things going on. And you know, the teachers and the educators, they're not trained to do that. The parents aren't trained to do that. Okay, but our office, our, our job, one of our jobs is to take the fifty thousand foot view of what's going on in our county as far as education and support that. So we're not in the weeds with the schools. We work with the schools, we work with the Department of Education, and we also work with the feds in all things that are um, basically the same across, across the board. All of the problems that is the same, and this is a big one. It has to do with, uh, students not coming to school. We have students that are have, that have drugs, drug problems, et cetera, et cetera, and a lot of behavioral problems. And we are here to help them fix this.
So this is a, a grant that comes to us then, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and then it's, and so you, you have to, what happens if you don't get that, like the next year? Or you're pretty, are you pretty sure that you probably get this grant?
Yes.
Really, okay.
So Superintendent Clay, just to clarify, that is, that hundred twenty-two K is a grant that we're getting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's coming from?
This one is com, this one is coming from the, um, Department of Education.
Put that down before Doge gets it, because that's going, that's one of the agencies that's going away.
No, this is a, this is a state, this is a state.
I was talking about the federal.
We have one from the feds, but I would say no matter what, we still have the same problem across the United States.
Sure.
And we need to fix it.
Okay, well, that's great.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, Madam Clay.
Yes, sir.
Um, I looked at all the, the material that I, that was available when, when I emailed you and I was looking for a well-thought-out strategy for suicide prevention. So is there a well-thought-out strategy for suicide prevention since I was looking at it last time and emailed you?
We have a, um, a myriad of strategies for suicide prevention. It just depends on which one we, we select. And that's going to be, um, a collaboration between ourselves, the Department of Education and all the schools. We try not to dictate to the schools. Anything that we do with all the school districts and even the charter schools, when we get something, we have meetings with them and we decide on how we're going to move forward. So, um, we're not going to say this is exactly what we're going to do, because every school district is different. But every school district has to have a voice in our decisions, so.
Do they?
Some do, but a lot, but since we started this, a lot of our rural schools, they depend on us.
Okay.
But still, every school does have one, but the capacity to put it in action is very hard. You have, we have schools that are one-room schoolhouses, um, that have two employees and maybe ten to twelve students. We have other schools that have maybe thirty-five students and they have five teachers. So these teachers, some of these teachers are teaching more than one subject
Right.
Across more than one grade.
So that's where then they come and depend on you to, if they have a situation.
And collaboration, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Again, we do not force anything down anyone's throat because school, public school belongs to the community. So what we do, we bring all this to them and say, okay, this is what we have. What do you have? And we bring everything together and we figure out that plan.
Have further comment, which is, uh, if you're likely to target a minute, a miniscule portion of youth, uh, which I think you are, you're going to, you're going to target a miniscule portion of the total people that, that might commit suicide.
No, sir. Miniscule is, are those people, are those students who actually do it? That is after the bank. We have to, we have to depend on before the bank, and that's what this is about.
Tell me what you mean.
Okay, there are students who are thinking about it, there are situations that's going on, okay? In the world, in their world, and how do we figure out how to help them? So my thing is, we do prevent, preventative things right now. Because if we do things at, yes, you're talking about those students who have done it or tried to do it. We need to minimize that. And I think because we've only had maybe five or six, but that's still a lot, okay? We have to make sure we even minimize that number. So what we're doing is preventive maintenance for our students.
Okay, that, that was my point, was prevention. And I mentioned that, uh, a, a well-thought-out strategy for suicide prevention.
Yes.
So I'm looking for.
Yes.
So do you, do you have something that you can like explain to us, like is there a hotline or how do you identify? You know, like the, the young man who done, who just, uh, committed suicide a couple of months, gets in a fall from Douglas. Um, is there, is it an identifying where you see them acting in a certain place, or is there something that they can actually call and go to?
All of those things you're saying, we already have those things in place. We have an emergency response team in place. We have, when a school needs something, they press, they, they basically send us the information and we go ahead into all of the groups that are helping us. Um, like, uh, all the behavioral health, the mental health groups, uh, this one, um, for the dogs, all these different, the ones who come in, the, the, all those things. So we have those things in place for the teachers to press those buttons, but we also have a lot of data, okay, from the Department of Education. We have our own data. We even have a student advisory council that we meet once a month that has fifteen students in it. These fifteen students are coming from all over the county. The stories that they're telling us that doesn't hit the data is what we need to concentrate on. And basically, um, what they're telling us, they're telling us some really deep things. And what we're going to do with that advisory council is do a P S A countywide on suicide prevention, on bullying, and we're also going to be taking that to the state and briefing the state board of education, because no one really has ever done anything like this before. Usually things are are pushed on kids and pushed on teachers. So when you talk about a plan, we have a outline. The outline has to be filled out within our county. We are not going to tell our, our school, this is how we're going to do it. We're going to say, this place, this school is very rural and these are the issues that we have. This school right here is like Sierra Vista or Douglas. They have their own different types of problems. But when we look at everything and do a Venn diagram, we try to find out what are the things that are the same. And we also, like I said, and these kids may, I would like them to come and brief you.
Oh, that would be nice.
They will, because they're going to be briefing the mayors, et cetera, et cetera. They're putting together, they're, they're doing research. They're going back into the schools. And some of the things that we've heard from them, for example, they're telling us that when there's bullies in the school, the teachers don't know how to deal with that right then and there. And if a student is suspended, when they come back, they are ten times worse than they were when they left. The teachers don't know anything about it. The parents don't know anything about it. So we had, one of our plans was to have the student advisory council, because we need to get a three hundred and sixty degree view on what's going on in this county. But it's the same thing that's happening in the state. So these students not only are going to talk about it, okay, next time you see us again, we, we got a twenty thousand dollar grant just for the student advisory council so that we can start working on, um, public service announcements, so that we can start working on um, them being ambassadors in the school and, and having discussions with students and adults and whoever would listen. We are into making plans and moving forward. So as you say, yes, there is a outline. That outline is coming from other schools. Best practices, right? So we have those. But that's not enough. We have to sit down and talk with the people that we're going to work with and say, this is what we think, what you have, and then we, then that's how we can go forward. But we wanted to say something.
I did. Hi, I'm Cynthia Myers. I'm the outreach manager for the school's office. Um, this particular grant, we were actually selected by A D E as the pilot county for developing the suicide awareness and prevention program. So to answer your question, there is not a lot existing. Uh, on the state level, they did On the state level, they did the Project Aware for a couple of years, and the data in that Project Aware led the state to come to the conclusion that we needed to focus more on suicide prevention and also self-harm. So we're talking not just about suicide, we're talking about drug use and other things that actually affect, affect the students in terms of self-harm. But we are the pilot county for helping the state develop what that protocol is going to look like for all of the school districts in the state of Arizona. And that's where this funding comes in, and that's our role in this.
And I'd like to say that, that. That's a testament of what we're doing here in Cochise County. When the state and the feds and even in the Department of Education says, look at Cochise County and look at what they're doing, and let's go ahead and, and, and give these pilot programs to them and let's move forward. And I would say it's because our schools and our, our leaders, we are very, very close. Very, very close. We have meetings once a month and we discuss a lot of things.
So is the plan in development or you have a plan?
No, our, our, the plan is over the next five years to work with the Arizona Department of Education, also the Arizona Department of Health, to develop a pilot program in Cochise County where we're going to do a train-the-train, train-the-trainer model. So once the program is actually developed, they're going to work with the person that we hire in the county to develop that programming and then be going out into our schools and training the staff in the schools to be able to develop, to be able to deliver the programming to their students. And then what's going to end up happening is, once that program is developed on the state level with the assistance of our county, then they will start to spread that out throughout the state and give support to that program. It's going to take about five years.
That's what that hundred twenty-two thousand is going to that person who's doing this?
That's exactly. The fun, the money that you're looking at there is for the individual that we're going to hire to implement the program in the county and to work with the state on developing the program.
Will you tell me, I'm sorry, tell me your name again, please?
Cynthia.
Cynthia, was your last name?
Myers.
Myers, okay. I was, I was surprised, because that's neither Ms. Wright nor Ms. Madden, but that's okay. So at what point would you be prepared to present measures of effectiveness during this five-year period?
We can, we can go ahead.
We can do it on a yearly basis. Okay, the thing is, we have to have that longitudinal data, okay? So even after a year, you know anything about statistics? Even twelve months, it's not going to give you enough data, but we can give you what? In fact, when we ask to renew this and we get the money, we can give you that data then.
Okay, a year, okay.
We will also to, the two grants, I don't know if you remember, last month, we did the, the behavior, the Department of Justice stop grant, we came before you for that particular grant. That grant will actually support this, because there is that anonymous tip reporting tool that will go into all of the schools in Cochise County. We will also be able to collect suicide awareness and prevention data from that anonymous tip line. And it will also work well with the behavioral threat assessment that we're going to be implementing in the schools and the software that comes along with that implementation. We will be able to integrate the suicide awareness and prevention programming into what we're going to do with that other funding. So we'll be able to pull data from about three different sources on that. So any, I would say in a year, we can give you an update on that, absolutely.
Okay, so my final comment would be that the more taxes are expended and collected, the less discretionary income the taxpayers have to support charities with no or low overhead. So that's what you're competing with, in my opinion.
Well, I will work in, the whole idea of this funding is really also to develop the collaborative relationships. When this, the state worked on the Project Aware, that was strictly in Maricopa County. And what they realized was that the tribal communities and the rural areas were left out of how that process should work. And when they looked at it on paper, this like this, they're not going to work in the majority of the counties in Arizona where there are those rural areas and the tribal kind of overlap. And so the idea is to work collaboratively with organizations that we're currently working with when you're talking about other areas of the funding, which is to cover how we're going to kind of create, creating, build capacity, but also have a continuum of care for these students. Those nonprofit organizations that are already in the county are going to be a crucial part of that continuum of care, because we only have a certain level that we can do in the schools in the county. The care team helps us a lot with assessment, a clinical assessment. But whenever anything else has to happen, we still do rely on those nonprofit organizations. So they will, will, they will partner with us on this.
That's what I meant when I said likely to target a miniscule portion of youth. So there is that problem. So you're talking about one person for the whole county?
Well, it's a train-the-trainer model, so it will start out as one person in our office working with the state. But the responsibility of that individual is to go into every school and train staff in that school so they can deliver their own program. And we will do that in collaboration with the nonprofit organizations. We will train somebody in their organization as well. But by the end of the five years, all of the schools in Cochise County will have the tools and be trained in whatever programming the state decides to implement based on what we do in Cochise County.
And then that part of that is to create, collect the data from the nonprofits and from each individual school set. You can show your, your, your return of investment, I guess, is going to, okay.
Correct.
And we're already, it's like Cynthia said, we're already working. We, we don't do anything on our own. I mean, we're already working with nonprofits. We, we are collaborating with everyone. In fact, we have meetings with every quarter with all of them.
And nonprofits would be churches or like?
Churches, we have NAMI, if you know, NAMI, all the behavioral health organizations, yes, we have representatives from, his name is Bishop Simpson. He is, he's, he represents all of the clergy across Cochise County. So what we're doing, we are inviting everybody. We did this before we even received the money. We were doing this. So again, I think that's one of, one of the main reasons why they probably selected us, because we understood the importance of collaboration and planning together.
I got, I got two quick questions. Number one, who writes the job rig for this? Do you write it?
We write it, we, we write it together. We get, and then we get professionals and then we get with HR.
Okay, so.
Can I just jump in there too? Also, ADE, when we formulated the contract, we came up with some standard, you know, kind of protocol for that, yes, for that position. Yes, and that came from the.
Do they, do they have to be a Cochise County resident?
No, they do not.
Something to, can we do that? Can we say we prefer them to be a Cochise? We can do that?
We, 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 the thing is, first, we have to see if we can get.
Right, and then the second half was, is it going to be a remote or is it going to be an in-person job?
It will be, they will work the same hours we work, okay, and that's.
They'll be at your office?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
They'll be, I mean, they'll be working remotely if everything is going right. They should be in schools at least three days a week, working with the schools once we get that training program.
Like here in Cochise County.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
I think, I think our biggest challenge has always been to attract, it's like you were talking about, attracting people to come down here. We have to attract the right people down here, because what's happening now, the schools are hiring people out of Tucson and Phoenix.
Actual teens.
Well, not, not just teachers, we're just talking about for, for health.
Yeah.
And, and we are, they're charging crazy amounts of money. All right, so we need to try, I, I call it shake the trees down here in Cochise County. Try to find, find those people. And if we can't try to start getting them trained, I think we're also working with Cochise College. And all of those classes and occupations that have to do with what we're doing, we're working with them saying, listen, we need to see your graduation list and try to.
And HOSA too, right?
Oh, yes, HOSA, HOSA, yes, but they are going to, HOSA is just to high school. Then they have to go to Cochise College and continue their training.
Sometimes that encourages them, you know.
Oh, definitely, one hundred percent.
That they could actually stay in county. And I'd like to say, it would be great if we saw the student council, advisory council, just to give them the experience of coming in front of us and telling us what they're doing.
Oh, yeah.
If you think that that's a good idea.
No, that is, ma'am, that, if we can have them speak to you guys before they speak to the State Board of Education.
Give them good practice.
That would be amazing.
Yeah.
Sure, trying to move along. Any other questions? No, ma'am. All right, thank you so much, Superintendent Clay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, one last, one last thing. Where do we post all our job rigs at? Do we have, is it a standard?
We have a, on our website, we have a human resources page, job postings, and then
Is that for?
We have it in paper.
Everybody? Is that the sheriff?
Any, all internal.
Every job in the county goes on that website.
Courts go on a separate site.
Yeah, of course. Separate branch department.
The link to theirs is in the same place as ours, if one, one dot the other, but.
Yeah, I got you. So, okay, that's good. All right, so item number ten now. This is another one that I, I guess me and Ms. Gomez were talking about earlier, just getting some information on where, where this is, that's all. I guess I can go look in it.
Oh.
But just if I know, you know, who, who, who's, who's, and then the other question I have on this is, do we need to do executive session on this because it involves litigation? Because he's got his attorney coming in?
I will refer to County Chief Civil Deputy Paul Correa on that. I don't know much about this one.
Yeah, good morning, supervisors. No, this, this isn't an executive session issue. This is an appeal from a hearing officer's order about a zoning violation. So you'll have all of the appeal information in your packet. Mr. Bob Statchel is representing a guy who was in violation of zoning ordinances for his area. He, this is all neighbor complaint-driven, by the way. So our code enforcement officers don't go driving around looking for the violation. Someone complained about it, they go out and they verify. And then they issue a direction, a notice of violation letter that that has to be fixed. So a lot of this is people that have junk in their yards or sometimes they're operating a business without authorization and the neighbors complain about it. I did appear at this hearing, I don't always, but since Bob was on the other side representing, I went. We got an order from the hearing officer saying that the guy needs to clean up his yard and stop doing a junkyard operation if that's what he's doing. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to unfairly make a, an argument in advance of argument, all right? You know, I want to respect this guy's right to procedural process. But what you will be given is an argument that the administrative hearing officer's order should be reversed. And the options you have then are based on the evidence and the law to review, affirm, modify, or reverse the hearing officer's order. It's, you know, kind of like a thumbs up or thumbs down or thumb sideways.
Got you. We're, we're just the board of appeal for this guy then, right?
Yes.
All right, so that's, that's, we get to decide thumbs up, thumbs, thumbs down.
And read that, we'll read that in the packet that gets on Friday.
Yes, you can, you can probably go on to it. Let's do it now, it should be attached, but on Friday it'll be posted for the public.
Mr. Correa, do we have a current hearing officer or is this a former hearing officer that brought this to us?
We do. We have, this was actually the first hearing of our hearing officer Gary Raymickert, who has been a JP prior to that. So we were just really happy that he was able to step up. That was actually the, the idea of Luis Secoda, one of our paralegals here, who knew him. So, yeah, he was able to step in and fill that spot and we're rolling forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Any other comments on agenda item number ten? Nope, all right, moving on. IT, all right, so we got a contract, it looks like that we have to approve, so I guess, what's, what do we?
So actually, we've got Mr. Gordon back there and, and Ms. Coppola from procurement.
So you're an IT guy?
I am.
Okay.
Today, we are asking you guys to approve a new contract to replace all of the multifunction copiers around the county. The contract that we currently have has, we're at the end of it. So we needed to go, we had an open bid. We ended up having a total of five different companies submit proposals. And the one that we're presenting to you today was both the best fit and the best price.
So do we lease those with a service contract? Is that how it's done?
Yeah.
That's a good way to do it, so you don't have to own them, they can't have to fix them.
Yeah.
Then if they screw up, you can boot them out and break somebody else and you don't have to worry about turning over all your cop.
How long is the contract for?
So we told sixty months.
Five years?
Five years.
Oh, wow. It's a long time.
Yeah. It makes sense because of the way that the lease works. If we were to, you know, have a shorter contract, we would end up bearing a larger amount of depreciation upfront. But this kind of spreads it out over time and we kind of get the full value out of the copiers by, by doing the full sixty months.
So based on the previous one, what's the inflationary increase on this new one? You know the numbers? I haven't bought them. So is it like ten percent, eighty percent? Or is it something like twenty, twenty-five percent?
Pretty minimal, actually.
It is?
Yeah. Our costs were looking, you know, the same, so production are showing actually maybe a little bit of savings.
That's good.
Okay, I was just curious. I'll take your word for you. You can, wait now and next week, you can come up with the numbers and just tell us next week. I mean, I, I was just curious to know.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
All right, number twelve, juvenile probation, approved versus Prevention Services Act, Title IV E, service agreement between the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office and the courts in Cochise County Probation Department. So this falls under, who owns the probation part?
That's courts as well.
The courts owns probation. So why are we?
We, we approve all grants and agreements.
Even for the courts?
For the courts. Teresa Raffidge again, or Rita Shipley, I'm not sure which one is going to.
The grand people.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Rita Shipley, I'm the Judicial Budget and Finance Director. And as Sharon, as Ms. Gilman indicated, the Superior Courts are part of the state Superior Court system or the judicial branch on there. However, we utilize, we share resources with the counties, such as the Treasurer's Office, to receive our funds and finance. So we want to present any of our agreements and funding agreements to the board. That way, everyone's aware of what's coming through, since you do have oversight of those other departments on there. So we run everything through the board. And we also like to get it on the official, our file as well. This particular agreement, this is, this is a service agreement between us and the Supreme Court. It outlines our duties for this particular program. This service agreement, there is not a dollar amount attached to this. There's a separate funding agreement that was presented earlier in the year for that. But this outlines the duties. And basically, this program is for youth that are either in foster care or guardianship programs that are also involved in the juvenile court system. And if they are in need of behavioral health or substance abuse treatment, the probation staff tries to find them a bed in an outpatient facility. And that saves the state money, so the AOC will request reimbursement. And then that money gets passed down to us if we are.
But you're just like billing them, in essence, or the service, billing the state for the services?
We do the services anyway, but it's a federal program, so the, the.
But I mean, you don't get, you don't get a lump of money. You, you basically have to justify each case to get the money?
Yeah, with these Title IV Es, because it's involved with the Department of Child Safety, there's very specific criteria.
Is there a cap on that amount or could you just submit as much as you want against it?
We have very little activity, because our, our county is very small. We've been, there's been great efforts in reducing the juvenile crime on there and finding diversion programs. So there's, yeah, we didn't, not, as far as I'm aware, there's not a cap. There might be at the AOC level, but not with us here at the county level.
So other than the administrative, minimal administrative costs of managing it, you don't see any fiscal impact to the county budget?
No, and there is a portion in this agreement that does mention county funding. And it basically states, if that funding is not, that reimbursement from the state is not available. And it basically states if that funding is not, that reimbursement from the state is not available, we have to find other money. However, this particular Title 4E, we don't use it to fund positions or any ongoing projects or equipment or operating supplies. We use this money only if we receive a reimbursement. Then we use it for one-time projects or equipment for officers and operating supplies. So there's no impact to the county if we receive funding or not receive funding from them.
Ms. Shipley, I believe you, you mentioned something about outpatient facilities, such find a bed. Can you tell me?
I'll turn that over to Ms. Raffage.
Thank you.
Um, we do receive funding from the AOC for out of home placement. And that's for youth that need to go to a facility, usually in Phoenix or Yabba Pi County, where they're confined for, you know, 30 days to whatever they need. And that's what we're talking about here, is that's one of the qualifiers for reimbursement, excuse me, is if they are in out of home placement and also in the DCS system.
Okay, is this like incarceration? And if not, how is it not like incarceration?
There are some that are locked down, facilities where it's more, it's not like being in a detention center, but they might have a lockdown. And there are others that may be unlocked, depending on the type of care they need.
I understand.
But this is somebody, some kid is already going through the process of the court system and has issues or whatever. You don't have many of them, but in case you do, okay.
I don't know. Any others? Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Alright, so the next one we have here is item number 13. It's a discussion of possible action regarding state federal legislative matters listed and described. I actually talked to Ms. Gilmann earlier. There's a couple of things that I brought up. One of which is the new executive orders and proclamations just came out from the President. Several of those directly impact services in this county that are federally funded. And one of the things the President put out is any federal dollars going to anybody that's not a legal U.S. citizen are to cease immediately. He also, was it 287G? Is that what it was? The Homeland Security Act?
Yes.
Which allows the Sheriff's Department to aggressively interdict, engage, and arrest anybody suspected of being a member of, associated with a cartel or trend de del agua or MS-13. And it allows to include cross-border enforcement of protecting invasion of the United States. That's in there. It gives the sheriff new powers under that modification to do things. It also allows to arrest and detain anyone suspected of entering within the last two years, anyone in the country illegally that cannot prove U.S. citizenship. And that may have an impact of where we're going to put those people, you know? So we have to start having a briefing from, from the sheriff, from the Health Department, from any other agency in this county that receives federal funding that might be going towards anybody that's in the country illegally. So we need to have that put on a future agenda quickly to deal with that because that is a significant impact to this county. Positive and negative. So Mr. Crosby?
Do you, do you remember any more details about what you said as cross-border factors involving cross-border?
So in the provision that he stated regarding those three entities declaring them as terrorist organization, it grants the military and law enforcement the ability to engage them and if necessary, on the Mexican side of the border. So that, I may be, that's why we need an analysis of it. It may be that that just is for Green Berets and Navy SEALs to go take out guys. I don't know, but the way I read, read the executive order, it implies that because these are terrorist groups, that military and law enforcement entities within the United States are able to engage them. Now, I'm not talking about going across the border to arrest illegal aliens or anything like that. This is, this, and those three, those three groups were specifically identified in that executive order as terrorist organizations and therefore granting military and law enforcement agencies the ability to interdict them on both sides of the border. So I'm thinking that that is more related to my past profession or, you know, Navy SEALs being able to go into Mexico and smoke these guys in their little, little hideouts or whatever. But I don't know what the impact is to law enforcement. That's why I said we need to, we need to have somebody analyze that. And, and there are like 13 executive orders that are directly relating to illegal immigration, including the first 78 that were overturning all of the Biden executive orders, basically. It was his first executive order was to overturn all those orders. So there's a lot of stuff in there. It's, it's stuff that I think an attorney or somebody with significant experience on that needs to take a look at because I don't know what we're on the hook for. And I don't know what new powers are granted to the Sheriff's Department and to the Douglas Police Department and to any other entity that shares a border with Mexico and need law enforcement, even Sierra Vista may be even involved in that. Yes, sir.
Hot pursuit is a well-established doctrine, whether it's like out of the territorial waters by the Coast Guard or by the Buffalo Soldier.
No, I, I, what I'm getting at is, again, this week has been a very sweeping week with executive orders. And just through my cursory review of those, I could see several of them impact since we are ground zero here. You know, the county, and it grants significant power to the Sheriff's Department.
It is going to be interesting because, you know.
What the sheriff plans to do with that, I don't know. Maybe he could tell us that, but it's, it's a lot of stuff. Sorry, Ms. Gilmann.
No, it's like, you know, before that, when I did a tour with an open borders guy and stuff, they have the safe houses when they get deported that they come back in. So it's going to be interesting to see how far that, that, those orders reach. Does it mean like, you know, when they find safe houses from the coyotes or whatever, who are then going to bring the people, try to bring them back in? Does it stop, you know, do they get involved then? I don't know. But you're right. It's going to be very wide sweeping, I think.
There's a provision in there also that deals with jurisdictions that promote sanctuary policies. And if you fail to follow these directives, you could be subject to losing all of your federal funding too. So that's, that's another provision that's in there.
Okay, do we have any, Cochise County? I mean, I know that some people think we have some, but do we, we don't officially have any, do we?
Any what?
Sanctuary cities.
Oh, no, not in that regard.
But again, it's not, it's not just the.
But if they, they.
If anyone even passively resisting, failing to cooperate with ICE and customs, border customs, failing to provide information can be deemed under that executive order as not following that guidelines. You could lose your federal funding. So that's, that's the.
So I would just ask that you have this discussion again, maybe next week for the official meeting? Because this was a good discussion, I think, but it'd be good if you, in the report, you talk about that.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. It, it, it's, it's just, you know, something we gotta, we gotta take a look at.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Because it's a new world, like I said. And, and again, 287G, the, the changes to that are significant. They go well beyond what he did during his first term. So there are significant powers granted under that. So having a lawyer, and then what's our liability for that, right? So, so say the sheriff and his posse see a MS-13 group just over the border getting together. Maybe they're going to do something or whatever. He decides to interdict them before they come across. You know, what's, what's the legality of that? I'm just saying.
No, I mean, but it's not.
But technically, the way I read it, he could do that.
I think it's a valid question, especially, you know, you have the single law cowboys. I don't know how much they're involved in things, but, but yeah. So there's, there's a context, you know.
Say, say you see, say you see guys with backpacks and AK-47s walking across on the other side of the border. Now they're in, you know, you haven't seen it.
Yeah.
So technically, under that order, military and law enforcement could interdict. So I'm just saying, I, I may not be reading it that way, but that's the way it looked to me. I think it was generically probably oriented towards, more towards the military.
Yeah.
Maybe, but it says, and law enforcement.
So, yeah.
So, I don't know.
And that tomorrow, the Legislative Policy Committee meets, so you could report back on Monday or Tuesday anything that you learned from this CSA Legislative Policy Committee you could put in this spot too, since that meeting's on.
I learned a lot, too much. I think it's going to have some people a little upset about how much I learned. So sometimes, you know, you get, you get tidbits of information that tend to be, tend to be better and whatnot. The other thing I wanted to do, and I also, I talked to, because I can't talk to you guys except for here.
I understand.
I'd like to do a resolution to the state legislature and the government in support of the election reform to require mail-in ballots to be returned on Friday by 5:00 PM. And have all three of us sign on that resolution in support of that and have it delivered to the Governor's Office and to the Speaker and Senate President.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that.
Probably. Anything having to do with tightening up security of mail-in ballots, I am in favor.
Yeah, well, the bill, the bill that's up there now is going to have a bunch of stuff added to it. It'll be, the snot will be amended out of it, I'm sure. And it may be even watered down, negotiated to get the Governor to sign it. But the key provision of it is to deal with the mail-in ballots. And as we know, the biggest problem is people dropping their ballots off on election day. The county recorder has to review all those signatures. It takes three days from there to get them across the street to the Elections Department. And then we're on TV, everybody's saying, why is it taking Cochise County three days, four days, five days, six days? To count, to count ballots. So that, that one key provision is, I think, important to, to us. I know the Recorder and the Elections Director may want to chime in on that as well, and we should give them that opportunity.
Should get a reporter.
Well, once we get, that's, that's another thing we're going to.
But before that, we were going to talk about reviewing all the things that happened during the election here, right? Is that on the agenda for like a work session? Because one of the things, I don't know if it's just we could do it county or if it has to go to state, is to let the candidates review the ballots that they're on the precincts so they can, like an extra set of eyes. Because you know, so that's how my race didn't get on the ballot. So is that something that we could do county or do we have to go to the state?
So as far as the work session, yeah, that is something that we are discussing and having in the near future. I don't know if it's made an official date yet, but yeah, over the next, next month.
Putting our materials together. Okay.
We need to have a, a, several comprehensive election meetings, including, you may remember something called the Purcell Doctrine, which is that the closer you get to the election, the, the fewer changes you can make to whatever it is because they're afraid if you make a whole bunch of changes, then people won't show up at the polls because they'll be confused.
And the other, the other side of this strategy is too, as we've seen, is courts tend not to like to do after the facts decisions. So if we have something, it's better to get sued early so that we could fight it. Because I don't want a judge saying, well, if I do this, it's going to change the outcome of the election. So let's try to get whatever we want to do upfront. And if somebody wants to sue us over it.
And that's like voting centers, right?
Yeah, I mean, so there was a big case.
This will be part of that work session that we're going to have.
Yeah, there, there was a big case out of Maricopa County where the Secretary of State and the Attorney General got a little tamped down and basically said that you can't write things in the Election Procedures Manual that's not in statute. And there was a stink over that. So that's something else we got to look at is the, and get our Elections Director maybe to tell us about that. I'm not 100% up on it, but the Election Procedure Manual, there were some embellishments that went into that by the Secretary of State, so.
There's also a removal of 10 pages between 2019 and the most recent update.
So Miracle County sued him and won, saying he put stuff in there that was not in statute. And he read into the statute. The judge specifically said, you're not allowed to read into the statute and gain, you know, something that isn't specifically spelled out in statute. So he was, what's the lack of, what's the legal term? He was admonished by the court for doing that. So, so, but we need to, we need to get smart on the Election Procedure Manual.
Yeah, and then about to be, so it might be, my concern is we're straying a little.
Yeah, yeah, we have a separate room for that. It's a work.
That'll be.
That's a special work.
Tuesday morning, it's a special meeting, Tuesday for, for the recorder process.
And that's at, at what time is that? Is it 9:30? 9:30. The 28th, right?
Yeah.
So no more, no more meetings today?
No more meetings today. So that concludes the agenda for the regular meeting. So like I said, we have the work session as well on Tuesday for the recorder and that, the appointment process to discuss that, what that will look like. And then an executive session on Tuesday at 1:00 regarding the petition to review.
And then, does it review? Do we have that set up yet?
Yes, you just need to do some training.
Yeah.
So when is training? Laura can work with you to schedule that.
Just one last note as, as well, you know, the, the last item on the agenda is just your current events, just to put out there. If you guys can think of anything.
Are you talking current events or like what?
Well, if you want to make an announcement, like you're, you know, something special's going on in Douglas. Yeah, something that you want to add in there. Just a reminder to think between now and, and you want to throw something in there.
I guess.
I just want to thank our attendees, especially our last two.
Dedicated folks.
So nothing, if there's nothing else, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this work session.
I will agree with you.
Second?
And all those in favor?
At it.
Alright, I'll adjourn.